Yeah, okay.
Okay, so it's five past seven. We're gonna start this meeting of the Yalesburgs Planning Commission. Would you like to call a roll, please?
Sure. Reeve?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Stiles?
Here.
Fozell?
Here.
Abraham?
Here.
Also present are Planner Denise Swinger and Solicitor Jessica Brockman.
Thank you. So we have an agenda, a fairly long agenda. Any suggestions or changes? Or if not, I have one suggestion.
Yes, well, I was gonna suggest that our A and B, under public hearings, that we simply skip over those and not to do anything.
Yeah, and so that's for the minor subdivision applications. If the planning commission does not take any action, then it happens without any further discussion. And so if everybody has, no one has an issue with that, I agree with that. Just let that happen administratively, and these folks can go on.
To council.
So.
They go to council, right?
Nope.
Nope.
It goes to administrative.
It's done. I have one other suggestion, and that is that we move the pocket neighborhood development forward ahead of the discussion on noxious weeds. I think we're gonna be, have a fairly long meeting here, and I think we wanna kinda get to that. I think we have a month or two before we have to deal with weeds.
I have the people here for the noxious weeds.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I thought you were joking. Sorry. Yeah, 'cause I don't think it should be.
Okay, so we need to cover it.
Yeah, 'cause they're here, yeah.
All right, we'll leave it at this thing. Never mind.
And just to clarify, did you want to make a motion to, for my benefit, it would be great to see a motion so that when we look back at the record, it's clear that the planning commission moved not to consider...
Susan, do you wanna make a motion?
I can make a motion, but are we even supposed to make a motion if we are just being silent on it?
That you're just not considering the discussion or hear the presentation.
We're not taking any action is the terminology, right?
You choose not to hear the presentation and not to take any action. That would, I mean, that would be the motion. Otherwise Denise would present to you.
Okay, I make a motion that our, under public hearings, our minor subdivision applications, A and B, that we take no action, and I guess that's it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
All right. Next on the item is nomination of chair. And this was on our agenda last time, and we didn't do anything about it. I gotta say, I've been doing this for a while. I'd rather not do it anymore.
As I say, you're doing a great job. I would like to nominate you.
Let's not have a second, okay? Let that die.
I have to second.
I'm sorry, and I was, sorry, not paying any attention whatsoever. Could I get the...
Well, I nominated Matt as our chair.
Jerry seconded.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Olive Steen.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you.
You'll get a really nice plaque.
Thank you, Susan. Next item on the list is the review of minutes from the 23rd of January. Hopefully, we all had a chance to review these. Does anyone have any comments on the first page? The second page? Third page? Seventh or eighth? If there's no comments or changes, do we make kind of a motion to accept these as written?
So who?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Adam Steen.
Adam Steen. Next item on the agenda is communications. Do we have any communications? I believe we do, do we? It's not part of the packet. Next item is council report.
There are a couple of things happened at council. One, we, council did have a couple of executive sessions concerning the real estate. Council did pass two resolutions as a result of that. One was to use, to provide up to 200,000 for possible easement. The second one, Judy, if I'm...
Easement, what?
Was easement on purchase of real estate.
Conservation easement.
Conservation easement.
Okay.
Okay, and then the second one was to reaffirm that the village would not extend utilities outside of our boundary.
Why was that necessary? Isn't that in the charter?
It is not, it is not uber, uber clear in the charter, and I think the affirmation was sought because of the possible sale of the arnevitz property and not knowing what anyone might wanna undertake on that property, and just to sort of make that abundantly clear on the part of council.
And of course, we did get the final report on the New Year's Eve ball drop incident with the planning. And I think that was, that was it in terms of major.
It was kind of a lot, actually. It summarized it very concisely, but there was a lot that went on, yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is where if you have comments on anything to address the planning commission about that's not on the other, on the agenda otherwise, it's an opportunity to come forward and say your piece. Otherwise, as we go through the individual items, there'll be a time there for you to, as well, to comment on specific items. So if there's no citizen comments, then we'll go into the public hearings. So we've dismissed the first two, so the third one is the conditional use application for 319 Allen Street. So the way these, these public hearings go is that we have a, we hear from staff, have a discussion here, then we open the public hearing, allow folks, actually, we also hear from the applicant, and then we'll open the floor for comments from anyone who wants to contribute to that discussion, and then we'll close that public hearing and come back up here for some rendering then on the application. So to begin with, Denise, do you wanna start off the discussion, please?
Yeah. Eric Juergens has applied for a conditional use hearing tonight to put an accessory dwelling unit on his property at 319 Allen Street. The proposed dwelling is 936 square feet, which is 136 square feet over the allowable requirement, so he did go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they approved a variance of 136 square feet, allowing this accessory structure and dwelling unit to be 936 square feet in size. So tonight, what the planning commission needs to review is looking at the plan itself, making sure that it meets all the conditions in the conditional use for an accessory dwelling unit. And he is here along with his contractor.
Okay. Do you wanna hear from them first, and then they come back to you, or?
Do you wanna say anything about the unit?
Sure. Hello, I'm Eric Juergens, and that is me, that's the plan for this. Really, I guess, I don't know, what, I guess, I'm more than happy to entertain any questions you have. I don't know, the application to dwelling itself kinda speaks for itself, but we're looking to, basically, build a garage and then an apartment over the top of it for we have out-of-town family. Children are grown, come back occasionally, that kind of thing. Apology to the sun, gets to stay over the summer. And just based on, the garage that's there now is not really gonna fit our needs, so that's where we ended up where we are now. I can tell you that this is not my first property in Yellow Springs, actually, my third one. I've tried to leave each one a little bit better than when I found it, and I think I've, in a humble manner, been successful at that. And so, anyway, I promise you, we have a quality structure. We take care of the property, and I think, again, the previous history kinda speaks for itself, so appreciate your help.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
You're planning them, so the picture that we received, that's the current garage?
That's correct.
And you're planning on then taking that down?
Yeah.
Okay.
We would, and basically, the footprint is similar, not exactly where that garage is located, it's larger, a little higher, but in that same general area, yes. The structure itself is somewhat similar, but a little larger than the garage I built at 1108 Xenia Avenue. It's very similar to that, small tweaks, but similar to that, and something to look at that you're up to.
Okay, thank you.
And then how far off the property line are you gonna be, you think?
Whatever, I'm not sure.
It's got a hard to redraw.
Since 20 feet.
Yeah, what's submitted on there is, yeah. I mean, we addressed the setback lines, like where we need to be, and even a little bit further, so.
Yeah, how much was it, Denise?
It says the rear setback...
Oh, there it is.
For an accessory structure is 10 feet, but this structure will be setback 20 feet. My question is, if I can ask this, why was the BZA, why did they approve the addition of square footage?
Actually, we asked for that, I think, quite honestly, I've got, the total property itself is two and a quarter acres, and so it's a pretty large piece. And I don't, I can't necessarily address their mindset, but I think that, you know, if, if I was gonna guess, I mean, I don't wanna call it a hardship, but the property itself needs maintenance and that kind of thing, I like to take care of, I mean, there is an extra room for, say, lawn or gardening, or, you know, I like cars, too, so, I mean, room for three cars, but some other things, too, that personally, I would like to have not stored in the house to take care of the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is the square footage, is the footprint print larger than what's the garage that's there now?
I haven't really measured it, to be honest with you. It's, I suppose it is a little bit larger.
But not by a lot?
I don't think so, though. I imagine that structure that's there is, well, there's room for two cars, it's not as deep, that was one of the problems, too. It's only about 16 or 17 feet deep, which is really, when you, you could get a compact car in there, but you can't, can't really, you couldn't get like a pickup truck or anything like this, garage's not deep enough, what's there right now. And it's, where it's semi, a store and a half, the upstairs, if you'd be just for storage, is probably 60, because it's not torn, so, or actually, yeah.
Any other questions for, while he's here? On his feet? Okay, thanks. You bet.
One of the things that I realized after he had turned in his application, that property is using a well for water. Our zoning code states public water and sanitary is required for all property in these districts. However, in conferring with legal and with the water superintendent, he felt that, rather than telling them that they can't use the well, which they've been using for a long time, that one of the conditions be that have a water meter installed near the well, so at least we will be able to calculate the sewer. As you're gonna, you know, that, that property is going to not be separately metered, that accessory dwelling unit will have to tie in with the existing water and sewer. But since they have their own water, right now, the way it is, because there is no meter there, any, any water that is used from the well goes into the sewer system.
Oh, it does, okay.
And it's not calculated.
No, so they're not...
So they're basically only paying a readiness for service fee.
Yeah. You had a nice deal there.
What's that?
You had a nice deal there.
Yeah, well, I am, well, actually, guys, with the I will, they had the nice deal since last August.
Right.
And the people before me had a great deal. However, I do pay, I do not know how that is calculated, I do pay something for sewer. I do not know what that is, but I do pay.
It's a readiness for service fee. It's what you pay, which, because your sewer is calculated off your water meter, and because you don't have a water meter, they, they, they're not able to estimate what your use is. So it would just be a simple water meter that would be put at, at that location to calculate the sewer only, you wouldn't be charged for the water.
Okay, that's totally fine with me. I'm not looking to take advantage of anybody. I'm happy to pay for whatever it is I use. I, that's my obligation.
That's, that's what the, and, and the village didn't wanna say you can't use the well, so, okay, so, this was sort of the meeting halfway there.
And quite frankly, at the end of the day, we probably will tap the water anyway. I, I mean, the well is really not preferable water, okay, so...
Well, at that point, you do, you can talk to the water superintendent, because the water line is out of the road, you know, you're pretty far away from that, so you'd have to...
I think we did a little best deal on that, I think it's...
It's, it's there. It was taken off of the city water and went into the well at some point.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's right there beside it.
Well, I mean, obviously, that would be even better, more preferable.
Easier for you guys.
And again, I, I mean, I guess my point would be twofold. Number one is probably eventually, sure, when we're all finished here, we'll be using the village water, and we have to pay for it, and, and whatever is fair, I'm totally good with that.
Okay, that's fine.
So, so yes, if you need to install a water meter, by all means, hook it up.
Great.
Okay. Okay, if there's any, no other questions, anyone have any questions for Denise?
Yeah, on the final thoughts, where the owner of a home on the Kurt Street was talking about that they have a wall windows, and they were concerned about, about the lighting? Okay. I was, I was a little bit confused.
Yeah, so we'll get that in the public...
Yeah, give me your comments.
Tim Conrad, I'm Eric's building. I was out there this morning, just looking at things, and there, the building that they're talking about already is entirely east of where the existing garage is, and so it's not a direct line of sight up into the current building, but Posen is even moving it a little bit further west by a few feet. So it's not a direct line of sight, but just, just letting us know where things actually are.
Okay. And they do have a, they're actually moving the structure a little bit forward than the existing, so they're gonna have a 20-foot setback, even though accessory dwelling units only require 10, and side yards being five for an accessory dwelling or, and structure, they're gonna be 32 feet from the side yard, so you do have plenty of room if you do wanna go a little bit that way.
Okay. Any more questions for Denise? Any discussion here amongst us? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing, anyone who has anything they wanna address with respect to this topic, come to the podium and, and say your piece, and if not, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion here? And I know the, the BZA, their discussion, it sounds like, dealing with the question of, of sight lines and all that, I mean, it's always a tension that we have, right, with setbacks and, you know, solar rights and everything else, and screening, and I know it's, 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 it's hard to make everybody happy. So the extra setback, I think that's, that's definitely helpful.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Denise? Any discussion here? If not, do we wanna consider a motion?
Well, I move that we approve this with the condition or the requirement that they install a water meter to calculate the sewer use.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Can you maybe just clarify that the water meter is installed to the, to both facility, both units?
The water meter will be installed on the well.
Okay.
To calculate the sewer use.
For both structures.
For both structures, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I have what I, I'm sorry. Yes, I have what I need, but unless you wanna add that final approval will be given by the village or some such thing, you've got that in the recommendations, but that's...
Yeah, 'cause he's, he's interested in maybe actually hooking up to the village waters.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Maybe that they work with village staff on installation of a water meter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you repeat what you just said?
She'll repeat the whole thing when she's done, right?
She's wanting that the, that the applicant contact the water superintendent for the location and installation of the water meter.
Okay, so what I've got, and this may be a little rocky here, so, so you're moving to approve with, under the condition that the applicant work with village staff on the installation of a water meter to monitor well water usage?
Yeah, as it relates to the sewer.
Well, well, water usage or tap into public water, the sewer. Okay.
Just to monitor water usage of both structures. You should say both structures.
For both structures.
To calculate the sewer use.
Sewer use. And I would assume that your condition just goes away if he decides to tap in, because at that point, he's just following regulations, so we don't need to state that.
Correct.
Right.
So, do you wanna, do you want that clumsy thing on again?
Yeah, please, one more time.
Yeah, what are we zoning on?
So the condition that the applicant work with village staff for installation of a water meter to monitor water usage for both structures for the calculation of sewer use, right now?
Yeah.
That's a little extra information there, but it was for the sewer.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's good.
That's perfect. So you wanna call the roll?
Did we get a second on that?
Yep, I did.
Jerry did, so that was okay. Stiles?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Fozell?
Yes.
Abraham?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Will we need to accomplish that before we can proceed with the county and building protocol?
No. No, you can go ahead with the county. Yeah, I'll, I'll give you that, 'cause it'll be a condition on the, in the letter that I give you, along with the permit.
Yeah, I mean, we'll need to come back there again once we get that meter installed, or...
No, you're working with the staff.
You'll work with, yeah, you'll work with our staff, but you're gonna, you can proceed with Green County building regulations once I give you that zoning permit.
Sure. Make it happen.
Okay. Item D on the agenda is the noxious weed, removal of plants and weeds by owner amendment These folks came to us three months ago, is that what it's been?
Oh, yeah.
With kind of a wide-ranging discussion, and so Denise, you crafted some language for the...
No, they did.
Okay.
They crafted the language. The environmental commission came up with the language. When we met in October, they, we had talked about the July 1 enforcement date regarding mowing was problematic, making people wait that long. People would call in and say that their, the weeds are really getting bad and, and lawns that need to be mowed, and there wasn't anything we could do from a staff point of view because of that July 1. So the recommendation, one of the recommendations was to strike that language, but they also wanted to add a lot more language educationally as well, to let people know what is considered noxious, and I think they can present this much better than me.
Okay. And so ultimately, what our goal here is tonight, is this is a modification of the revised...
Existing.
The existing code.
Yeah, yeah, and it's not in the zoning code at all. It's, this is something that is, environmental commission presented to council, the council asked planning commission to review it.
So we're just reviewing it?
And making our recommendations.
We're making the recommendations.
Back to council.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do you want to start with your, what you've added, and...
So actually, we haven't added anything from our last discussion. I would like to clarify, the environmental commission actually has part of its charter to advise the village council on revisions to ordinances relative to environmental, I can't read the language, but I won't, environmental issues, and that's really where the bulk of the changes to this ordinance come from. The, the changing to allow for managed natural landscapes to promote pollinator species and rain gardens, which actually is in another part, another ordinance as well, but also to expand the language to align with the ODNR on noxious and invasive species, so that people, regardless of whether or not they mow their properties, whether it's a forested area or whatever, it is a wooded area, that there, that it's recommended that they remove invasive and noxious species. Relative to the mow date, we recommended that, from an environmental perspective, that a no-mow date really doesn't make a lot of sense if we're going to have grass and mow it, then from an environmental perspective, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have one date or another, it would be completely arbitrary from our, from our perspective. But the last ask, well, the last time I was here, the ask, and actually Nadia Malachi was also here, was to review the ordinance relative to requiring people to mow versus not requiring them to mow, because as the ordinance is currently written, it only requires people to mow a buffer area around their property, it doesn't require them to mow their entire property, there's no actual requirement for that as currently written. From a, from a purely environmental perspective, as long as people are removing the noxious species...
It does, which it does require.
Which it does require.
Already.
Right, which it does require. So from a purely environmental perspective, if people don't have noxious species or invasive species on their plants, or on their property, there's really no environmental reason why they should mow it. As a matter of fact, there are probably a lot of reasons why they shouldn't. So we're, I could go into those, but I won't unless you would like me to. So we're not recommending any changes from our original changes, which included four areas, you know, summarize as, the addition of purple leustrite to the noxious weeds, and adding a clause to recommend a removal of the worst invasive plants as divided by the ODNR, the removal of the no-mow date section, and that would apply to the... The removal of the no mow date section, and that would apply to the buffer zones. And a clause encouraging or allowing for managed natural landscapes.
And so this is your language on the managed natural landscapes?
Language that went to the environmental commission and it was voted on and passed.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any questions?
So. Under comments where we, where it talks about the question was asked, how, how will the village then deal with persons who let their lawns grow without maintenance? And then after that, there's a statement that says that anyone with a lawn has to maintain it to a height of no of lower than twelve inches. So.
Are you reading part of the?
This is part of Denise's.
Yes.
It's in number three.
Right, so, but what he's saying is that will remain the same. The only thing that they're requesting that the village strike is, is number five, what will be number five B.
So they've kept.
Okay, I didn't, we didn't.
Yep, kept the twelve inches here.
Okay, okay.
And loosestrife.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, they're just adding a lot of information.
You didn't see that?
Yeah, we just got, yeah, okay, okay.
So, uh, maybe this is just, maybe this is clear. But the distinction between managed natural landscaping of native plant communities grown through their natural annual cycle is encouraged. And the cutting back of uncultivated non-woody plant growth, right? Which is in number three. So the original language is you have to mow uncultivated non-woody plant growth within five feet of the interior, blah, blah, blah. What? What makes managed natural landscaping of native plant communities different than uncultivated non-woody plant growth?
I think in terms of the setbacks, if you will, or the buffer zone, I don't think anything does.
Okay, so within that mowing area, even if you have a managed natural landscape, so there's no changes to the mowing regulation at all?
Right.
Okay. Oh, okay, this is just, we're encouraging you to.
There's a lot of other communities in the United States, including Cincinnati, a number other, the state of Ohio, who have this type of language in their, in their law ordinance, if you will. And we're looking to add that.
For what, what purpose does it provide? What's, what's the purpose?
So the, the value of the ordinance is that it promotes natural communities and it benefits from an environmental perspective, promotes natural communities and the benefits that come along with them, similar to.
How, how does, how does it promote anything? I, I don't understand.
If you have.
And legitimization is a big part of promoting, right? And it's, there's a similar ordinance, and I should have memorized the number, but promoting rain gardens, right? And allowing rain gardens, but there's no reason why one couldn't put in a rain garden if you didn't prevent them from putting.
Okay, so it's like, can I do this? And you look it up and you see that it's there.
Because most people think that they have to, there are many communities that require you to mow your grass to a height of two and a half to three inches. And that's literally all that you can do.
Yeah.
And so a lot of people think that, that is kind of universally applicable. So by having this kind of language, it makes it clear to people that you can, if you choose, have a managed natural landscape or a rain garden.
Okay. We're not allowing anything we didn't allow before and we're not, not allowing any, except for the dates.
I think the big thing too is, is under the old code, without this, if you had trees that you planted in your yard, someone could say, well, that's, you're letting your yard go, you need to mow that. And so this makes it clear that if you're trying to promote a natural area.
Well, if they were in the five foot buffer zone, you still would be.
What does other uncultivated woody species mean?
Yeah. That's a, that's what I, that's my real question.
By being explicit about what you will allow and what is allowed, it makes it clear to people if I want to plant meadow or natural grasses and take care of them and make sure that there aren't invasive species and those things in them, if that is.
I, I just, you know, like to know why we are putting in things and taking out things. Thank you.
Actually, there is some verbiage in there around the last sentence around the benefits under section four. It also is in line with our village's commitment to pursue always possible for lowering our carbon footprint.
Yes.
It's consistent with that.
Okay. Thanks. Any more questions? Okay, so this is again a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing if anyone has any comments regarding this text change recommendation to council regarding the removal of plants and weeds. This is your opportunity. If no one would like to speak on this subject, then we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion? If not, would someone like to make a recommendation as to how we act on this with council?
So, yeah, it would be a motion that we.
Well, I move that we accept the staff's recommendation for approval of the proposed tax amendment to forward on to council with the findings that it is in compliance with section twelve eighty dash oh two parentheses A of the zoning code.
Well, are we approving it or are we recommending it?
We're approving it's rec.
I'm, I'm approving the staff's recommendation.
Which we send it to council.
And we send it to council.
Okay, but it's not necessary for us to approve it, it's necessary for us to recommend it.
We have to approve the recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So we have a second?
That's fine.
I second it.
Do you'd like to call the roll, please?
Abraham?
Aye.
Hozel?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the tax amendments regarding short term rentals, rentals. Denise, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, I mean, at the last meeting, we, we were pretty, we weren't really kind of hashed everything out. But there was a change to the definition again and that had, that had already been approved like in November. So it had not been publicly published in the newspaper, publicly noticed. So that's why, thank you, that's why we had to go, we had to come back again. So we, I think the language pretty much, this just the, the definition change after what we had approved before for was one person on a, we had daily, weekly or monthly basis, but typically less than one year. We now said for fewer than thirty days. So a dwelling unit or room in a dwelling unit, which we're adding, that is rented or leased to one person, family or entity for fewer than thirty days. And so that was what we decided to do. And then we had already reviewed, but if you want to review it again, the other information regarding the short term rentals, I did take a language from the accessory dwelling unit to plug in there. And that, this is a lot more detailed than what was in there before.
So how much of this Denise have we not seen up to, up to this point? Didn't we approve some of these specific requirements?
Well, at the last meeting, we, we reviewed some of these specific requirements. I don't know if we actually voted on them.
I don't think we voted on them.
We just had a discussion about the language.
We, we changed the for fewer than thirty days, so we had, we didn't vote on anything.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Because we hadn't, I hadn't noticed that.
We didn't notice.
Yeah, because you already, you already proved the definition, then you decided to modify the definition.
Okay, it's all coming back to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have a question. Once this is passed, how do you deal with the already operating Airbnb's? Are you going to contact them and? Or what do you do?
Well, we had talked about this before. I, if, you know, if, if I can, if I, if I can, what I would do is ask that they just come back through for a hearing here and I'd waive the fee since they're already grandfathered in prior to that. But just for a review, I think conditional use hearings are, you know, sometimes you have to come back anyway after a certain period of time and revisit. But, you know, I'll explain to people that it's really just so that we, you know, have a contact, emergency contact for the police department and that kind of thing.
Yep.
So.
A list of them too.
Right, a list.
Is that something that could be done administratively?
Without coming to. Well, the only thing is, and I think what Susan might be getting at, is that because these are a conditional use and they didn't come before the planning commission for a conditional use hearing per se, they've, they've been a conditional use since the zoning code went into existence in two thousand thirteen. So, I mean.
If they're, if they are new between the new code being adopted and now.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they'd be grandfathered in.
They'd be really grandfathered in. I mean, they're kind of, because we, our language wasn't very good, you know, it was hard to.
And you've said you've been contacted by some.
I've been contacted by people that have been interested in having an Airbnb and I let them know that this language is there and, and it's always been there. It's just it's getting some clarification to the definition of it. So I'll look into that. I'll look at it as a, whether.
I mean, I was.
I'll see how many and if it can be an administrative.
And what do you folks think? Do you think, do you want to have a hearing for every Airbnb in town?
I mean, I think if we go about just approving everyone, that if we have the hearings and we approve everyone who comes forward, we're gonna have a lot of angry neighbors, right? Like who have already been living with the with a unregistered.
I would assume they wouldn't necessarily be angry neighbors unless they've already complained to Denise.
Have you had many complaints?
One, that it was an anonymous complaint, so.
Given the chance to complain, I don't know what, I mean.
Maybe you want to give the folks a forum to complain, I guess.
That's the, that's the question. Do we have to? Do we have to?
We don't necessarily have to, but in some ways, in some, that's part of our function is to give people a forum to speak what's on their mind.
I mean, if they, if it was already required that they have a conditional use before this change, seems like, yeah, they should have a conditional use hearing.
Their day in court, you know?
What, what do you think?
I mean, yeah, I, I guess, I guess if, given those circumstances that, you know, it already was in the code for short term rentals and this qualifies, then yeah.
And we've actually made it less restrictive, right? Because of the, it's, it's not, it's not for like month to month anymore. It's really literally for just the people who are renting for less than thirty days. And you would think that there would be some requirement if you were renting something for less than thirty days.
Well, I mean, we don't monitor people that buy a property and they rent it to people in year to year lease or what have, that's not what this is about.
Yeah.
This is sort of almost like, it's like a little hotel.
Yeah, this is about, this is about short term visitors to a neighborhood that don't have connection to the community and, you know, there's safety concerns and accountability concerns.
Right.
When, when you're talking about who's managing a property, you know, what the details of that are and just so the village has information if, you know, something happens, it seems like that's.
Well, we'll still have that information if they have to come to Denise as administrative action.
But, yeah, moving forward, any, they're, they're gonna have to come before planning commission.
But do we want them to come before planning commission? In addition to that.
But the people from the past, I mean.
I think it's quite possible that there's people who have neighbors who are running an Airbnb that they may not have complaints about, but they might not realize it's an Airbnb or what's going on there. I mean, giving the people the chance to be like, you know, this is what's going on in your neighborhood exactly. Do you want this to happen? I think that's fair and we're gonna be doing it to people going forward and if it's already been written in. So it sounds like going forward, we should, we want them to have a hearing.
Probably so, since it's, yeah.
It's extra.
Well, going forward, but also retroactively.
Neighborhood.
Yeah.
And then retroactively, do we want them to come in?
I mean, I think, I think so.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's what I was making.
It would certainly give us a better idea of what's going on.
Right.
I mean, it's not, it's not gonna be a question of being able to then tell them, okay, now you can't do this anymore.
Yeah, yeah. We won't be able to tell them, no, you can't do this anymore. Okay.
I don't think you can force them to come in either, though.
Right.
I mean, if they're not gonna come in.
All right.
Maybe they'll give you the information still, though, which would be good.
Which, which makes us now come in full circle around to what Matt's saying. Should I just try to get all the information I need from an administrator?
Oh, if they don't have to come in anyway. But would we, but if they don't have to come in, would we have to notify their neighbors? I mean, and we wouldn't have to put up a sign. That's the question, right? Putting up a sign and notifying their neighbors. It's not about whether or not they get their day in court. It's about whether or not the people in the neighborhood get to express their feelings to us
Right.
on the record.
I get, yeah, go ahead.
Sort of devil's advocate question about the fact that you can't force anyone to come in and comply with the administrative request. And that is that your purpose in gaining that list is so that when you do get someone who's compliant and comes in and says, I'd like to have an Airbnb in this neighborhood, Denise can pull out that list and say, well, there are three of them. And so as we conduct our hearing, we're gonna take note that there are three of them. However, if you can't make anyone come in and say, I've already got an existing Airbnb, I mean, that just seems to be a disadvantage to the village side of things. I don't know that it changes it if you require that they actually have a hearing, except that then you have neighbors going, yeah, well, how come the guy on the other side didn't have to come in? He's got one too. I mean, that's the only, that can of worms is gonna open up on you. I don't know how you.
Well, it's a same question, though, is, is you can't say you can have X number per block. It's just, it's something that we, we can't say that in the, I don't think, even in the ordinance, right?
Wait, so are you saying that?
I thought you could limit them as an overall.
I think we heard from these folks that we can only limit it through a hearing, through administratively. People say enough's enough. It's, and it might be different from one neighborhood to another.
And sparking and stuff.
They can't say there's ten per square mile or.
Wait, so are you saying that if we have a hear, if we require people who already are doing this to, if they read, like, if we say, you're doing this, like, we have evidence that you're doing this, they will only give us the information if we don't make them come in? Because they have to give us the information about what they're do. I mean, they have to apply for conditional use or else they're not, they can't do it legally.
Well, they already are doing it.
But they would have.
Now this is new.
But they would be, what's, what's, what's the penalty?
So they've been, so they've never had to, they've been able to operate without a conditional use?
Pretty much, yes.
And it's not been a requirement?
It has not been a requirement.
Even though the use has changed?
Even though we have short term rentals in the code, most are not, the definition that we had. that we had, there was, there wasn't, it wasn't... It didn't fit, the definition. It didn't fit.
So it's a loophole.
So you can't go back and regulate people after they've already been doing it?
So the best we can hope for is to have them register...
To those people, we would want them just to register them, I guess.
I mean, you can tell them...
They may want, they may want to come in.
But they have to, so you, you can't tell them not to do it, so there's no way to make them give you information because there's no way to charge them with not...
Why would anyone give you information? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Well, in case there's an emergency and they were, you know, and if they're, we, the village needs to know who's managing it in case there's an emergency, if something happens, somebody gets hurt.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
Medical emergency, whatever.
Okay, so I...
You can see all of them. I've looked at the rooms. I mean, you can see everywhere.
How many?
Their pictures are there.
Yeah.
I think there's at least...
I don't know.
I mean, it's not clear that...
It's not clear because...
There's quite a few. There are quite a few.
Yellow Springs as much is...
The area they do is...
More than you think.
It's not our corporate limits when they say Yellow Springs.
Twenty miles or something like that.
But there's, I mean, seems like there's quite a few.
Yeah.
I would argue for an administrative way.
Going forward or for the...
Just for the path.
Just for existing, from the people who are grandfathered in who we can't tell them to stop anyway, for them to...
So now, wait a minute.
To get conditional...
What if they, because we have requirements now that, like, that it's a family, you know, if it's one unit, that it would be a family or, you know, a one group...
No more than two adults.
Yes. So what if right now they're housing more than that? Can they be stopped from doing that?
No, no.
What if I started doing an Airbnb, I mean, like...
Sorry, Dan.
I mean, going forward now, everybody has to obviously come in and like, go with conditional use, but what if I wanted to start one tomorrow and I just told you I've been doing it this whole time? I mean, what? I don't know.
It's gonna be difficult.
It just seems like it's a very, like, just nebulous situation.
But isn't that how all of our new regulations are?
I mean, really, I mean, we're, I mean, we're a complaint-driven... Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's how... So it's just an avenue for complaints, I mean, if... So if neighbors say, what the heck's going on now, you know?
So they must all be operating okay?
Well, except for one at least.
That's how, it was anonymous.
So it sounds like we should, we agree they should have a comment forward for a hearing from, as soon as this is adopted.
Well, that's what it says.
And then, but between the folks prior to this day or the final adoption of this, we just want them administratively to give Denise the information that she needs.
Will they be, will they have a conditional use granted to them administratively?
Let me ask this question, because I'll get back to it. If, if we did a public notice that basically said, anyone who is operating under these conditions would, needs to come forward, is there any way that, because if not, then after this date, any that are discovered are considered to be new?
I don't think, I'd have to look, but I...
I mean, yeah, you know what I'm trying to get at? Otherwise, it's almost like sending out a mass letter.
But they have receipts for, I mean, if they were, if they were old, they have receipts for, I mean, if they wanted to drag it out, they have receipts that they've been operating for a certain amount of time. They can prove that they've been doing it right on new too.
Yeah, because the difficulty here is people like renting out a room.
Right.
You may never know that someone's just renting out a room.
I'm more worried about like the long-term, you know? If everyone's doing this, it's happening.
I don't think the long-term, like you said, the long-term is people have an investment in the neighborhood for a long, long term. It's the weekenders, you don't know, you don't know. And if the police don't, don't know who the emergency contact would be for the owner of the house or someone who manages the property to know what's going on.
Well, that should be on the auditor's website, right?
Well, but see, you know, if...
The person who does the maintenance.
The owner lives in California, it's like best...
And they have somebody locally managing it for them.
Yeah.
I've done some maintenance stuff for an Airbnb in town.
It sort of sounds like you're, the difficulty is realizing, well, no one's actually gonna, most folks aren't gonna voluntarily come forth and do what it is that we'd like them to do. And in a way, the question would be, well, where's the disadvantage? If you have a conditional use hearing for someone who is starting up a new operation, comes in legitimately, does it, neighbors may come and say, well, there are already two or three of those, we don't want another one. And that may be to that individual's disadvantage, but that's nothing the village can control. But from the village's side, if the village does due diligence, puts out a public notice, asks folks to come forward and be recognized administratively, if there is a disaster, the village says, we ask everyone to do this.
Yeah.
And they chose not to come in and there's nothing we have, we have no control over that.
Right, I understand.
So in a way, although it's a bummer, I think you're in a win-win if you publicly notice and just ask that folks come forward.
Yeah. So basically, so that we can have a registry of who they are. We're not asking them to come before the planning commission to possibly be denied or anything like that. We're just saying, we just need a reg, you know, to have a registry. We can work on that.
Do we have an application form for conditional use of short-term rentals specifically, or is it just, is it just the same as anything else?
It's gotta be changed because of adding all this.
Do we have to change that, or you can do that administratively?
I should be able to do that based on what you're proving here. I'm just adding that into the language, yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like we kind of have a plan there, but the question back before us then is still, is these text amendments. So if we're okay with how we think we want Denise to handle this...
I, I've moved that we approve these.
But we still have to have a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So that's where we're, so we're back to that topic, though?
Yeah.
Okay? The text changes. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Do you have any comments on this topic that you would like to address? Okay? Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And then, do we have any further discussion about these text changes? Okay, Rose, now you can make your motion.
I move to approve these text amendments regarding short-term rentals.
Same. Judy, would you like to call a roll, please?
Yes. Pelzow?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Givhan?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes. Flying right through this. Okay, so the next topic is the text amendments regarding pocket neighborhood developments. And so there's a series of items here.
We've kind of gone through before.
Yes. Let me, let me start here by asking Judy a question.
Yeah.
Do we need a public hearing on each of these amendments? Can we consider these en masse?
I think that you can. I mean, they are, they all relate to one, they all relate to one thing. You couldn't pull any one of those things out and have it stand alone and make a lot of sense, so, you know, I think you can have the conversation and then move. But in the motion, I would include every single item.
Because when it goes before council, doesn't it have to, don't you have, don't it have to do ordinance for each section of the text? Each separate...
We will, yes. Well, in order to do so, do you need separate motions from planning commission on each section since they're not making...
They're just, we're just recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's okay to have one big one, but for council, yeah, it'll have to be all separate because they're in all different sections, so...
Yeah.
I came to get a definition for what a pocket neighborhood is, the education.
Okay.
In all these. That's what I'm thinking. And most of the cases, putting that in, cluster housing, and tell me more about it, please.
Okay. So where is our definition? It's on here somewhere.
Yeah, it is.
In fact, it's back, I think, in the back with definition.
Yeah, so do you have a full packet? Is there...
There are packets out on the table.
Out on the table?
I don't actually see a definition.
We'll have...
Oh, it's there.
Next to the last page, at the bottom.
So was this all in the paper?
No.
Yes, I mean, only the, only the, the heading, the section number, but yes, those were all in the, each single, and every one of those was in the paper.
Oh, there's dwelling, pocket neighborhood development.
We kind of talked about when we reached the end.
What's changing?
Yeah.
It's where I have to find...
They are very, it is very similar to Cluster. It's very similar in that you have a shared common space, and you also essentially have a homeowners association that kind of manages that common space.
Do you not have a minimum amount of ground that needs to be...
Yes, yes, and that's...
Is all involved or covered, though?
Yeah. And it varies depending upon which residential district you're in.
Maybe we should start that and just say, this is pocket neighborhood, this is cluster development, definition, and do that, too.
No one did a cluster housing before this.
I think that's a very, very good definition of pocket neighborhood development.
I agree, very nice.
It's concise and...
Okay, so did we want to just go over the 1262-08 first then? Because everything else kind of falls in line with what...
The 1262-08? Yeah, I agree. That's what I, that's what I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna go through this and probably some of your questions are probably be answered. Okay, so this is a public hearing on chapter 1262, section 08, E Residential 6, Pocket Neighborhood Developments. Do you want to lead us through this?
Sure. Okay, so the underlying sections of this, we'll just take it through. These were, these were, have been discussed over the past few months as to what we want. We agreed that it could be considered in only the three residential districts, A, B, C. We had discussed that in residential A, following what is the requirement in our current zoning code, the density shall be a maximum of six units per acre, and B, eight units, and C, fourteen units. The minimum lot area for a PND is equal to the minimum lot requirements for the corresponding residential district, which is, you know, in the case of A, is seventy-five hundred square feet, but you wouldn't be able to put much on there. So to further clarify this, we said on a lot to be used for a PND, the lot size maximum must be under five acres. Once you hit five acres or more, it goes into a PUD. On a lot to be used for a PND, a minimum of four detached, single-family dwelling units around a common open space area are required. This will resolve any issues with someone who maybe wants to build a second home on their property, where there's a lot of space.
Or multiple accessory structures for housing.
Yeah.
And call it this instead.
Yes. On a lot to be used for a PND, an existing detached, single-family residential or duplex structure, which may be non-conforming with respect to the standards of the section, shall be permitted to remain, but the extent of the non-conformity may not be increased, and the existing structure will factor into the maximum lot coverage permitted for that residential zoning district. So if someone wanted to take an existing, single-family residential, and they can do that, if it is non-conforming, they won't be able to add on to the non-conformity, but they could use it, or the duplex. If it's already a duplex, they could use it as a duplex. The height limit and roof pitch, maximum of thirty-five feet for detached, single-family dwellings, which falls in line with our current code. Lot coverage in PNDs. What I'm, what was, what we're suggesting here is because PNDs shall be located on one lot, the developer's gonna have to determine the square footage of lot space for each individual dwelling unit in order to calculate future accessory structures for those dwelling units. So in essence, you're still gonna see lot lines, even though it's gonna be considered one lot, we would still want a drawing showing where the lot lines are so we can calculate And I did put in there that there was an example in another piece of legislation that only one garage is allowed per dwelling unit. Accessory structures for common usage are allowed in the common open space areas with other accessory structures prohibited. Meaning, for example, they may have had a storage unit for gardening for the whole common area. They might have had something that everybody could use. Or do we want to just leave it as it, as we have it here?
I like leaving it as we have it.
The maximum lot coverage permitted for principal accessory structures in PND shall be limited to that allowed in that corresponding residential zoning district. So in other words, then, if, if, if someone comes and they want to put an accessory structure there, based on what the square footage of that individual lot within that whole larger lot, and what they have on there is a house, if, if the square footage can be fifty percent, like in residential C, up to fifty percent, then they could do that. That's kind of what they're saying. If it's residential B, it'd be like forty percent residential. A, I think it's thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yeah. But what will be important is, is for me to be able to see that there's, that each lot has a defined area in order to be able to calculate, or I won't be able to calculate it.
Well, isn't this gonna be for the total lot? The entire pocket neighborhood coverage?
Well, it would be for that too as well, right?
Okay, okay.
It kind of is...
So that means, that goes back to the question about if you have a shared accessory structure, and as long as it fits in the maximum lot coverage, then it could be proposed and...
Well, I mean, most of that, the, are common open space areas, so they're gonna be huge, those common open space areas, so one accessory structure should not be an issue.
Which is why you wanted to meet for the entire lot, don't you? Not the individual sublots?
Well, I don't know, because then, would we get to a point where five or six people would have, put accessory structures on their individual lots? And then, because it goes over the total of the whole lot, if that happened, then they wouldn't be, other people wouldn't be able to? I don't know.
That's what that means.
Well, then, would you want to go back to allowing one garage per dwelling unit or not, or not that at all? Because I know we were trying to have parking lot areas.
You see the difference in this discussion?
I do.
You guys have an opinion?
So I don't understand the question.
So Denise is looking at this two ways. The large parcel, the percent coverage, and then also each individual dwelling unit is gonna have a sublot, essentially, and she's looking at the percentage coverage of each of those sublots as well.
To...
In that the existing code has a maximum lot coverage for structures. So in residence A, you can only have thirty-five percent lot coverage maximum. In B, it's forty, and C, it's fifty. And so depending upon where this pocket neighborhood is, that would be...
But doesn't the common open space negate that? Like, if you need a minimum of four hundred square feet per dwelling unit, then that's...
And actually, this says non-cover too, right? This is non-developed, or doesn't it?
Open space. I mean, I feel like that would cover it. That, I, I don't think we should think about this as sublots at all.
Well, uh, we're not gonna be able to calculate setbacks then, or just not have that.
Well, you, you calculate the setbacks.
I mean, the setbacks are on the outside of the major lot, the main lot, right? You don't.
Yeah, there's no interior setbacks.
I mean, the, well, you have to, you have to have some.
Okay, some interior setback, but it would be the same, it would, from house to house, right?
As opposed to lot line to lot.
Yeah. Which, you could do that on, it would be like a double setback, right? Cause you couldn't, you can't build right on.
Well, yeah, it's not really, really the setbacks, it's more the accessory structures. Because you could have, if you have a zero lot line, it's whatever we want, or you could say, have to be 15 feet from an adjacent, 15 feet between buildings. I mean, we could do that, not have those lot lines, but I think it's just more for calculating the accessory structures.
So, from, what, what are you measuring the accessory structures from? Like what, what setback are they?
It's not a setback, she's, we've got two different topics.
Oh, the square footage of the lot.
The coverage, the percentage of coverage, yeah.
Uh, for the accet, for any accessory dwellings.
Yeah.
For accessory structures.
No, no accessory dwellings, just accessory structure, yeah.
Does it help you at all to go back to the concept, just to look at the concept, when you think about the accessory structure issue? And what it is that you're trying to do with the pocket neighborhood at all, which is a set of dwellings with common space which is commonly used, as opposed to trying to figure out how each of those dwellings can have its own garage or shed?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I think it, then it's diverting from.
That's just high density, isn't it?
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about a high-density PUD, we're talking about shared.
Right.
So Denise, on D.
Yes.
You're thinking that maybe that sentence that you have there, maybe we should include it? About only one garage is allowed per dwelling unit.
Well, I think it's what everybody's saying is maybe cross out that, the second sentence. And then maybe.
The because?
Yes, and then maybe say, instead, make a statement about accessory structures. Just, um, maybe the size of an accessory structure.
Yeah, because, you know, we're gonna have a common space with the homeowners, I mean, the, the land of the, by the homeowners association, right? And so, there's no real lots.
Right.
Within the pocket neighborhood.
All right, so let's strike that out.
So because, everything, because and beyond is gone, it's underlined, okay.
So I guess we just leave it at that, and it just would be based on, um, that maximum lot coverage, somebody comes and wants to put an accessory structure next to their house. Do we want to have any language as far as setbacks to the house for the accessory structure? Or do, or to state that it follows the, the, um, 66% or 800 square feet, whichever is less? At least we wouldn't want to see an accessory structure end up being bigger than the house.
Sure, sure.
I just.
I agree.
Well, wouldn't it have to be approved by the homeowners association?
Yep, you would think so.
So you're not suggesting that we put in this, the other sentence that you have?
No, I was just saying that there was one that had that.
Cause now I'm thinking maybe that is a good, I did have only one garage per dwelling, and that accessory structures for the common usage are allowed in common open spaces. With other accessory structures prohibited.
Yeah. But if, if somebody decides to build little tiny houses, then a person could come along then and put.
Little tiny garages.
Well, I know, I mean, they could put a giant square foot garage.
Bigger than the house.
Bigger than the house, yeah.
Do we care?
And then they'd live in the garage and.
Oh, they wouldn't be allowed to do that.
It just wouldn't tell you.
If it was a shared garage.
It'd be an Airbnb.
It's residential usage.
Let's move on, and, and let's maybe look, come back to that, cause there's a section on parking, so maybe.
Okay.
We'll resolve that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, how about yard setbacks?
I like those. I know we didn't want them originally, but I think what she wrote, that we almost have to have them.
Well, and, and so I was thinking about external versus internal setbacks. Like from the property line. Because the setbacks from property lines are for the protection of the neighbors as well. Right, so you don't want to buy a house and then have somebody build something right on your property line. So I mean, there's that setback from your neighbor's property, but then there's internal setbacks between the individual houses in the.
So these are the external setbacks. I mean, the setbacks for, for front yards, rear yards, and side yards. But not between the houses that are.
See, I think we ought to maintain the external setbacks that are part of the code already.
But you know, I, I, I agree with what she says in this, that it would defeat the purpose of the PND, which is to have a more compact area of the dwelling.
Well, but if you use the setbacks that we have now for the existing, in the existing code, for the residence A, B, and C, and you use that for the perimeter, and then internally, you can have smaller distances between the individual structures. The setbacks are just like. In, in separation distances between the pocket neighborhood dwellings.
Well Denise, what did you mean by your paragraph below?
Well, um, if we had, if we, if we required these large setbacks, 25 feet in the front, 25 feet in the rear, then, um, you know, if this is, uh, oh, one acre lot, or half an acre lot in the RC, and they have, they could put up to 14 units, they wouldn't be able to do that. I don't know, if it, I, one of the things I've noticed in some PUDs that we have around here, like for example, the Stancliff neighborhood, that PUD, it says, I think it's like, um, the front yard setback is like seven feet from the property line. The, 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 the house has to be at least 15 feet from another house.
But that's within the PUD.
Yeah.
That's not distance from a property line with another neighbor that just happens to own adjacent property.
Well, it, it's, it's measuring from, I mean, they may have a property line, which they do in there, but it's, if, if that, how, that house has to be, if someone's wanting to build a house, they have to make sure that on, in their property, they can set it wherever they want to, as long as it's 15 feet from the house that's next to them.
Right, but that's within that PUD, those are the rules for that PUD.
Yeah, that's not setbacks.
I'm talking about the rules between NRA, between the individual properties.
That has to stay consistent.
So you're saying for that, you're saying the, the, the outer rim would be considered the?
Yes.
Is that even considered the backyard then?
Because we don't, we don't have lots in order, right, internal lots.
So that would be considered the, the outer rim would be like the backyard, the inner area is gonna be the.
I was just thinking, road frontage is the front.
Just like if it was a re, if, if the P, if the pocket neighborhood in its entirety was a house, and you could build a house that big, you couldn't build the house too close. You know, like, none of those houses could, could bleed over into where a giant house wouldn't be allowed to build.
And then anything internally, it doesn't matter, as long as they keep, like, having that 400 square feet common area.
Yeah, I mean, I think there probably needs to be some minimum separation.
Does there have to be?
Well, I think just for fire protection and that kind of stuff.
Well, they would have to follow fire hazard code, right? Like, that's not us.
I don't know.
Why, why, yeah, why would we want to set a minimum separation? Is it just like visibility, or way it looks, I mean, aesthetics?
You could pack too many in there.
We don't want to be driving.
It has a maximum that you can have.
A minimum and a maxo, so.
But, but there's a. But if, you know, we're saying, at least a walkway.
Oh, there are supposed to be walkways.
There are supposed to be sidewalks, you could require that.
I mean, I, I, I think that's why that's paired with the exterior setbacks, is to give you that extra space for those weird lots where you have, where you can't meet those, those outside setbacks, and then still get all the stuff in the same, probably, if, if, so there's, there's lots in town, certainly, where you could fit 14 things, but not with the exterior setbacks if you're requiring 10 feet between every, every building, right? So then, in order to get all your units on there, you, are, are setting a minimum distance between them might prohibit people from, they're required, or they're allowed to. And I think that within reason, I mean, the walkways and things like that would be heavily implicated into the plan anyways.
So, okay, so if we say that we're just gonna keep the external setbacks as already defined in the code.
Can we scratch F?
For the.
So we would take out F?
Yeah, scratch it. Or just say setbacks are as described in 1248-03A.
Setbacks are, just to make it clear.
Are what?
As described in the.
In table 1248-03A.
Okay.
So then Denise has a little section here about setbacks, and, so you got the exterior setbacks, but then she has a little section here about interior separation. Are we saying we don't, probably don't need to worry about that? Because that's gonna be driven by fire code?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's the case.
Well, that, yeah, that came from another, that was another example. And, but if we, if we don't.
I mean, five, five feet is, uh, is.
So, are we saying then?
Is what a ADA sidewalk is, right?
I don't know what it is, but there's some, I'm sure, prescribed.
So are you, are you saying then, pretty much then, uh, if we keep it described, described in table A, for the front and rear yards, we're, like, like you gave us that example, that house, I mean, we're looking at that as being the, the exterior perimeters, it has to be setback either like 25 feet or 20 feet.
Depending on what zone it's in.
Yeah.
So that's the exterior setbacks.
The rear is the exterior, or, or.
The rear would be the rear, just like.
The, the outside of the property is the exterior.
Yeah, so the.
It's one lot.
You just take whatever house is furthest back. You would do it from that, would be the rear, and whatever one's closest to the front. That would be the front.
So if someone tore down your house to make a pocket neighborhood, well, actually, you moved out of the township, didn't you?
Okay, so it's like, what is front, what is back? I mean, this is where.
Well, the road frontage is the front.
The road frontage would be the front, so that, they'd have to be, okay.
Yeah, just like a house.
Based on road frontage, okay.
Just like, how do you usually, how do you usually say what is front and what is left?
Okay, and then for side yard?
It'd be just as you determined it now.
Yeah, and that should.
I think we should say shall be. Instead of saying actual tables, say, as in the residential, corresponding residential zoning district, cause that's what we say everywhere else.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we should.
For now, for overall.
Instead of putting, as in table.
Okay.
Just put as, in the corresponding residential zoning district.
So are these pocket neighborhoods are gonna be like pocket neighborhood A, pocket neighborhood B? Because it's a new zone, right? So really, yes, no? It's a new zone, right?
No.
Oh, it's a conditional use, okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were doing a new.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about before.
We had talked about that before.
Yeah.
Okay. This kind of, so.
Regarding your comment though about interior setbacks, and I'm just, again, throwing this out as devil's advocate, because sometimes things that you do, you're weighing the benefit or disadvantage to the resident, and sometimes you're weighing benefit or disadvantages to a developer. And when I look at it, I see an advantage to a developer and a disadvantage to a resident when you remove interior setbacks. When you remove space between dwellings. Because now I can throw you in there like little rats in a cage, and it's okay, the zoning code lets me do it. But they, but they can only put in the maximum amount that's allowed.
But that's 14 dwellings.
On an acre in C.
Yeah, so.
And B, it's.
But that difference might mean an entire, another unit. You know, if you could get an, an, an entire other unit, if you only left five feet instead of 10 feet.
Then let's just make it five feet. Let's just make it five feet.
But I'm just saying, if you're.
She's saying, you could do it more.
What I think you should do is consider quality of life. Because that's what you're, you have before you, you get to determine whether you're advantaging a developer or you're advantaging a resident at this time.
Right, I mean.
And then that will stay that way.
It's, I mean, I, I was just under the, sort of the impression that the kind of, I mean, that this was, this pocket neighborhood thing was like, sort of, something that people would buy into in general, that they, they would want to live there. But then like, if that's only housing available, then that's.
Except that, you allowed it to be, it could be one owner.
Yeah.
Who rents out all of those units, that was a decision that was made at the last meeting, so in fact, not necessarily.
It could just be hall floor in a sense, yeah.
And, and, and these aren't gonna be single-family attached, these are only gonna be single-family dwelling units, so. So, we have to have some kind of separation.
I mean, what, so.
We're saying that we allow this particular sort of way around the rules because it's a good communal decision for Yellow Springs to allow this kind of dense development if it, if it meets these standards, right?
Right, right, I mean, because otherwise, they can come with the PUD, they can go through the PUD processes. They could still do that, I mean.
So we.
If they want to do something more dense.
So if we want, we're not stripping away all of the requirements, I understand what you're saying. I definitely think it should be more than five feet between, like.
So maybe what we're saying in here, if it's in residential C on the side yard, five feet can be the least with, with a total of, um, well, five on each side if it's RC. If it's RB, five would be the least, a total of 15. So if you're gonna be up to five feet on one side, you gotta be at least 15 on the other. And that will probably gauge any other houses as well.
But you can completely, you don't have to follow those setback requirements at all, cause you've already done your external setbacks. So internally, you can say simply, there should be X amount of space between structures, yeah.
Period, yeah, it's not a setback issue, we should put the setbacks.
Well, we're trying to discourage, right, is someone going in, being like, um, just personally saying, okay, here's the 400 square feet, um, per dwelling unit over here. Let's cram in as many single-family dwelling units over here. You're part of a homeowners association now, ta-da.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you pay me this much money a month. I mean, if we're going to do that, then why are there single-family dwelling units and not apartments if we're talking about actual, like, you know, housing stock? Adding housing stock, which is not what we're doing. Right?
So it sounds like we do these subs, subspacey. So what is that number?
I don't know, cause I, I think it's driven by, I hear what Rose is saying, but on an acre of land in C, you can't do more than 14 units. So it doesn't matter if you want to put in 20, you can only do 14. In B, you can only do, what, eight, and then A, you can only do, what, six? So it's driven by that, you, a developer can't put any more in. And isn't the plan gonna have to be approved?
Yes.
So.
Cause it is a conditional use.
Yeah, so it will certainly, they'll come.
What's, what's, what's the legal space, like, for a fire?
I don't know.
I mean, what's, what's that, is there, is there like a? I mean, if that's, if that's like a reasonable space, I mean.
Does the county have anything?
Um, I. In the site plan review, which is, um, what we're gonna require that they do a level B site plan review, there is a section in chapter 1268-06.
B site plan review, there is a section in chapter 1268-06, emergency access, all buildings and structures, including any fire department connections, shall be readily accessible to emergency vehicles.
Yeah.
And that's going to be our major consideration when we are approving these things, right?
I was saying, creating a slum, obviously, like, I think what you were saying, like, that's what we're not trying to do, is create like a situation where someone could come and create a slum.
Yeah, in fact, I was having second thoughts about our discussion about the rental property and whether should, we should have some percentage be rental and not all, so that you do avoid someone creating kind of a rental.
First thing, like, limiting the, the percentage of rentals that are allowed on the.
Yeah, so like 50%.
No, I, I.
No more than 50% are rentals, or something like that, so that you do have vested owners.
Oh, I agree.
Scattered amongst the renters, so that a person can't create this little fiefdom of rental properties.
That sounds really weird, though, you keep talking, talking about it like that.
And I don't know if that's, that's something to think about. All right, so we just went all over the map there.
Yeah, so where, what do we kind of decide on yard setbacks? We're just gonna.
I think we need to look and see what's required by the code, and it may be that that's sufficient.
And we may need to go to the county to ask them.
Well, I, I, I mean, it leaves it pretty open, readily accessible, which means that if you've got, let's say, a circular drive around your units, that they all front the circular drive, you're good to go. I mean, it just sort of, a reasonable.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that to me is reasonable, and then you're back to the question of, how do you want those units to look, and how much space do you want people to have as they walk out the door before they bump into their neighbor? How different will it look sitting in residence A than it, than the house next to it that has two acres and a spacious, slightly small mansion on it? I mean, it, it's about fitting in with the, the existing neighborhood to some degree, which is where your site plan thing comes in. I just think, I mean, Stancliff gives some guidelines, this amount of space between each dwelling, that, that just seems sort of like a reasonable thing to me. And then if someone brings you a site plan and says, well, we're gonna, we're gonna cluster these over here for this reason, but we're gonna put extra space up, you have some leeway, but I just think if you don't set any kind of minimum amount of space between dwellings, you could get something that just doesn't look like it fits in the neighborhood or is not aesthetically pleasing to the person living there either.
Right.
Do you know if the minimum requirement that was in RC, that, that obviously meets the code, right?
I hope so.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it's five feet for a side yard.
So, I mean, we, yeah.
So that takes you back to 10 feet between structures.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, yeah, you might as well do that then.
Why don't we just go with that, and then, it, it is a conditional use, and if they want to ask for some relief on that?
Because funny, funny shit properties, I, I just think weird, like, situations where like, it might not necess, it might necessarily not be the same, like, you know, it's bad to have a house that close, but yeah, all right.
What do you think?
And you're saying maybe.
I'm okay with that.
But are following the minimum yard setbacks for, for each one, or?
You could have a chair.
Or everything.
No, no, no internal setbacks, just separation between buildings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the external setbacks stays, they are.
Right.
Per, per residential district.
So you don't need the interior lot lines. Are you saying so that this way you don't have to use interior lot lines as a gauge, it's simply this much amount of space between dwellings?
That's the minimum.
Dwellings or structures?
Structures, I'm sorry.
I think it's tall, well, you define it as dwelling, but so you're saying 10 feet between each dwell?
Yeah, dwellings probably, the, the garage structure might be a little bit closer.
But is that going to be for, if it's in RA, RB, RC, or is it going to be 15 feet if it's RB and 20 feet if it's RA?
No, just leave it 10. No, it's just 10.
Okay.
Just because of the numbers themselves will sort of regulate that.
And then following the yard setbacks, as described in the corresponding residential districts for the front and rear.
Just for the perimeter.
Okay. All right, cool.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
We're going to have another hearing on this.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
Let's Chris get back. You okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so do you want to go to required common open space? 400 per dwelling. And just probably get S after your unit, right there, in the second line. 50% of the units shall have but common open space.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, I was confused about that, too. I thought you were going to say the structures all, each structure had to have but this.
They do.
It just needs a S. 50% of the units shall have but common open space, all shall be within 60 feet.
Each unit, 50% of the.
Wait, so each unit, 50% of its, no, no, 50% of all the units have to be touching, right?
Yeah.
It says unit.
I know, it should be S.
That's, that's, that's where I was confused. It didn't make sense to me either. Seems strange with this.
And then in Denise's discussion, there's a, a discussion about, you know, private versus public. I don't know if we want to dive into that or not.
That sounds like something that we could probably be discussed on a site plan process.
And it sounded like some of them allowed part of that public to be private. It, you would have private, I rather liked that.
It was like saying, like, out of 400 square feet, 200, like, could be, has to be usable, open space adjacent to the, for everybody, and 200 at least to, yeah.
So you could have essentially your flower beds around your house, or whatever.
Yes, yes, yeah, I like that.
So do you want to say half of it?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Is that okay with you?
Wait, so, so are we requiring that there's now 200 private space?
No, we would say that, that half could be.
Could be, up to half could be, oh, yeah, yeah, I like that. I like that.
So we can have a garden outside your back door?
Yeah, well, just like a little mini yard that's your own for whatever.
Right. Okay. We blew right through that section.
Yeah. Private, okay.
Okay.
Private, okay.
Okay, remember his favorite topic, parking.
Yeah, that's always one of my favorites.
So we talked about one and a half spaces per dwelling unit.
Yes, and another example I found was one space for each one bedroom dwelling and two spaces for each dwelling having two or more bedrooms.
How, how is like a parking space defined, right? What is, what does a half space mean necessarily?
Yeah, I know. I have no idea.
Smarter.
Well, that's why I kind of liked the one space for one bedroom and two spaces for two bedrooms.
Well, you, you have to round up, right?
Yeah, you do.
Right.
You just round up, if you have, right, if you have.
Well.
One dwelling unit, and you have two spaces.
Well, the only way to do it is if you're developing five.
You have two dwelling units, you have.
You need five spaces plus the other half, so that would be seven and a half, you rounded up to eight.
Yeah.
If you had five, that should be clear.
Of which some of these don't have to be, you know, you don't particularly have to have all your parking spaces at the, at your dwelling.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, if you had two units, you would need three. If you had three units, you would need, how many is that?
Five.
Five, yeah.
Because you need four and a half, so you'd round up to five.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Me too.
Because if you're going to.
Believe it or way it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Location? We don't want to, we don't want to clarify what a one half space is.
No.
Okay.
They'll find out.
It's for a motorcycle.
Yeah, I have a car, right.
Okay.
Bicycles.
Parking location. Essentially, on the property, as unatrue, as unobtrusive as possible.
Yeah.
Do we need to go any further than that?
Well, then location, doesn't it just say, yes, yeah, I think that's fine.
I don't know if it has anything, sorry, in our zoning code about the materials that you use for parking, like, you know, I mean, if it's.
Did, did the hotel need special approval for their parking?
They did, only because their stormwater management program includes, um, that big reservoirs underneath the parking lot.
Isn't there permissible?
Yeah, it's permissible, so there's, but there's actually a reservoirs underneath the parking lot that allow the water to, the stormwater to, to dissipate at a marginal fa, in a marginal fashion.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we would just use normal approval for that.
It's part of the review, right?
Yeah.
So we don't need to add all these extra things, it's sort of, always kind of already in our code? And then we can, as a, as a commission, you can talk about it.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so then I is kind of some of the other standards. So we said detached, single family.
So I think that should be a percentage.
For, for rental.
And that, no, for, for detached and for rental, owned and rented. I think both should be a percentage, but I can start, talk about it separately.
What are you talking about detached?
Number one, PNDs are limited to detached, single family dwellings, period. I would like it's on down to number five.
And you don't want that?
I, I would like that to be, that that's required for some of it, but that it's not required for all of it.
Well, what would A?
Because sharing walls is good for the advantage.
So you're saying you would, you would want to consider some duplex type?
Yes.
I mean, if the site plan was good, I mean, I, that, all of that's coming through, I, I, I see what you mean, I think it makes sense.
Like, what's the, if, if it's, if it's 10 feet between, you know, if it's 10 feet unused space between dwelling, single family dwelling units, why is, I mean, you know, like, if we're talking, if, if some, if only some of it is going to be allowed to be rented, right, which I'm in favor of, then I think some of it should be allowed. I don't, I don't think there's anything necessarily inherently bad about a apartment building. I don't think, like, in RA.
You're talking about a duplex, not an apartment building.
Our, our regular.
Is a duplex different than an apartment building?
Yeah, a duplex is not an apartment building. An apartment is considered more.
Than two?
That's my understanding.
Okay, well, yeah, we could limit how many units, right?
So two family is not permitted in RA right now.
One second, yeah.
But it is in B and C.
So, so A you could not allow.
But we're putting two families there. I mean, what's the difference? Or it's in our, if it's going to be in RA and there's two families, what's the difference between having 10 feet between them if it's on one lot?
Well, again, I think it's a question of, of the other folks in that district.
Yeah.
It's just like the setbacks.
But if the units, if the number of units is the same, we're adding, you know, if, if there's no, there's no distance between the two units at all, if there's a shared wall, that just means more common area, if the, if the lot is the same size and the units are the same size.
I, I understand that.
I thought we were requiring that there be five feet, 10 feet total. I'm confused now.
Well, what she's saying is if you have a duplex, you share a wall, then you actually have, you, you combine this space that would have been there between the buildings with the other space, and you have a larger.
I don't think I want to change A. If A doesn't allow duplexes, then I don't think we should allow them in this.
What's A?
Residential.
Can you, can you get around that by saying something like shared walls are permissible as stated for that particular residential district, or some, some language to that effect, so that.
But we're already getting around the, the, no, no duplexes allowed in A, because we're allowing more, we're allowing more units in a, that's the whole point.
Well, but we're only allowing six in RA.
But part of the discussion.
For an acre.
We had initially when Ted was here, is that pocket neighborhoods are more successful when they look like the surrounding community.
Uh-huh.
And so if the surrounding community is all single family homes.
But.
Then it's going to be more acceptable to that neighborhood if they're single family homes.
And there's nothing preventing it from being those single.
I don't know what successful means in that.
Well, that the neighbors and everyone is happier. I mean, he gave us the information we had to read, and, and it talked about that people that complained about the pocket neighborhoods, it was when they didn't architecturally look like the rest of the community, when they were, you know, a variety of things that are, were different.
I think Yellow Springs has a diverse housing market that nothing looks like the things around it, really.
There's a little bit of that going on, for sure. I, I, I think I agree with Susan, though. I think we need to, to, to say it's permitted in B and C and, and not in A. And that's the way the code's written now.
Yeah.
It's just easier than trying to.
I agree. Because then we're actually changing the code.
Yeah, we should, we should definitely add it, though, because like, there's no reason why B and C shouldn't have it if it's allowed.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
And do we want to, though, limit how many of the dwellings can be duplexes?
Well, how many are we allowing to be rented? I think those goes hand in hand.
Why don't we just say 50% of each?
I, I think that's.
As a starting point.
Yeah.
We've got to hear this again next month.
Yeah.
Let's just use that as a starting point, and we can discuss it further next month.
This is going to council, back to staff?
It comes back to us, doesn't it?
Yeah, we're not.
Oh, we're making so many changes.
When I get so many changes, it's going to need to come back.
So 50% can be duplexes and 50% can be rentals.
50%.
In B and C.
duplexes in B and C.
In B and C.
No, uh, no.
So there's nothing else that we're changing? Under number five, the dwelling units may be individually owned or rented, is what we have, so that's where we want to throw that in.
We're going to change.
We're changing both.
50% here.
One and five.
50% in B and C duplex.
Okay.
And then on five, we just say 50% could be rented.
Yeah, but, yeah, not more than 50%.
Not more.
Instead of residential, in residential, it would still be single family.
Okay.
But in B and C, there can be duplexes.
We are changing some things in.
Just duplexes.
There are.
Not single family attached.
Things in here that we're changing, that we're allowing in A that we haven't allowed in A before, right?
Pocket neighborhoods.
Pocket neighborhoods.
Yeah, but lots of these requirements go against the requirements of A, and we're just saying the detached, single dwelling units is not something that we're comfortable changing for A with pocket neighborhoods.
I'm not, not yet.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
And mainly because I think Rose, I'm thinking more about the neighbors, the, the adjoining property who have some expectation as to what's going to happen.
Yeah, but this couldn't happen when they bought their house. Like, this wouldn't be allowed when they bought their house necessarily. They didn't opt in to live next to a pocket neighborhood. And that was my whole thing with the setbacks, with the exterior setbacks remaining, because like, if you want to live in a pocket neighborhood, if you choose, or if like, that's just a situation when you get there, that's different than with, like, you've been here 20 years.
Right.
Now I have someone living right next to me, you know?
Right.
So, so this 50%, so we're talking, it's two family, is that how we call it in the And how we wrote it?
Uh, it says dwelling, no, it says dwelling two-family.
Dwelling two-family.
And accessory structures, follow the general provisions and lot coverage requirements of the residential, we'll be going back and trying to remember what we decided on that. We're going to kind of come back to that.
The accessory structures?
Yeah, we were going to come back to that because we weren't really sure on that lot coverage thing, what we want to do, as far as whether we want to spell out one garage allowed per dwelling unit or not, or how we're going to calculate that. I mean, right now, we have the maximum lot coverage permitted for principal and accessory structures, and PND shall be limited to that allowed in the corresponding residential zoning district.
Well, do we say there, lot coverage including garages and accessory structures?
I don't, I don't know, you can, now that you've just said 10 feet between structures, I mean, I guess, I guess if the developer maybe wanted to put 30 feet between structures and allow for accessory dwellings, or ex, I'm sorry, accessory structures. Well, or they could have the accessory structure at the back, at the rear, as long as they meet that, that, that perimeter, that exterior perimeter, right?
Yeah, we said 10 between dwellings, not necessarily just structures, right, it was the dwellings, that the 10 feet was, not for all structures on the property?
I think we said dwellings.
Yeah, dwellings, you're right.
Yeah, so we should have found out it was in the rear.
So accessory structures shall be allowed, it really, they really can't follow the, the general provisions, because general provisions would say an accessory structure could be 10 feet from the rear, and we, and they really can't, they have to follow the, the exterior.
Where are you?
Right here, other PND standards.
Ah, okay.
Number two, we just finished number one.
Yep, okay, accessory structures.
I mean, if you already changed the setback part, would that, would that, would that just negate that anyways?
No, I mean, we, we need to, I mean, we need to make sure we don't say you can follow the general provisions, that's in conflict, because general provisions allows an accessory structure to be five feet from the side and 10 feet from the rear.
Right.
So we need to like, at least, we could just say they're allowed, and lot coverage requirements. And, or accessory structures shall be allowed and must follow the lot coverage requirements?
Well, the lot coverage, the lot is so huge, technically.
Yeah, so we haven't really come to a conclusion on that, as to how we're going to figure that.
Could we base it on the size of the dwelling unit that it belongs to? Does it have, if it's a, if it's shared, then it's a percentage of the common area? If it's not shared, then it's a percentage of the house, does that work?
Our current code says 66% of the.
Of the house.
Of the house.
Okay.
Or 800 square feet, whichever is less, so that would keep you from.
That would work.
Yeah.
For the non-shared.
Non-shared, but if they're shared, they should be allowed to be bigger than that.
But you don't want 66% of the common area.
No. Maybe I do.
Well, if it were like a clubhouse.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be 50%.
Well, what if it was, what if it was a percentage of all of the units combined?
Yeah. Because it could be a, a common space building.
So what?
Like a covered roller skating rink.
20% or 25% of the common, of the common, or the square foot of the dwellings?
I would have to know what that would look like.
I know, that's a little bit of a stretch.
Like, on an acre, when you're allowed 600, 6 units, and you need this many, you know, square footage of, of common open space, how big would that shared? I, I would need to look at the math.
Yeah.
Can we get some examples for next time, of what that would look like?
I don't know, well, look, I mean.
No?
I feel like I've covered every one that I have seen, and it added everything in that I found, honestly.
You have, you've given us lots of information.
That's why all the stuff that I added in here came from multiple sources.
Well, if you have 400 square feet per dwelling, and what's our, the minimum number?
14, if it were C, on an acre.
If there's 14 units on an acre.
And so 400 by 14.
An acre's 49,000 some square feet, so.
So that's 5,600 square feet of common area.
Okay, so how big are the houses with all the setbacks? Is what you have to qual- you know?
What's the biggest house you could put in?
What's the biggest ha, if you put all of those houses, they were the biggest thing you could make with all the setbacks, then how big of a common accessory you?
Definitely we could do, is just let the homeowners association figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, exactly, they have to approve it anyway.
Right.
Well, maybe you could set a, not more than a maximum of X percent of something, and the only reason I say that is that Denise has the horrible task, 10 years down the road, when a particular homeowner wants now to build a garage, after the site plan's been approved, after, now we're well down the road, and somebody's got to go back and look at, oh, well, can you actually make, build a garage now, and how many square feet are already in use, and is, even if the homeowners association says, yeah, go ahead, everybody, sure, go ahead and have a garage, Denise has to have some way of knowing
Right.
yes or no to that garage.
Well, for, if they belong to the house, then we've already set that.
Yep.
If it, if it's a common accessory unit, then maybe 25% of the common area?
So one of these examples talked about hard-service patios versus?
Oh, yeah, it had to do with.
Well, that's one half, though, that's.
Yeah. Which, which we kind of got that, that two, out of that 400, 200 being private, so they wanted to put that hard-service patio in that, that area.
Yep.
But is there something, somewhere else that, like, to me, that's not a lot of common area, I mean, wouldn't there need to be other places where there was, I mean, common areas are going to be where those parking lots are at, too, but.
No, the common open space is not where the parking lots are.
Yeah.
They're different.
So we're talking 400 square feet per dwelling, half of which is common. So if you have 10 units, that's 2,000 square feet.
Has nothing to do with parking.
That's.
I can think there was something in the PUD that, like, had to be like, like 70%, was it 70% of common versus where the house is? Here, maybe I'm just.
Well, I understand what you're saying, though, I mean, that's not, well, so that kind of goes back to the hard-service thing, though, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Or we could say the parking area is excluded from the common open space.
Yeah.
That would be pretty simple.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Exclude the parking from the, just say that.
Oh, of course. That's what, that's what our conversation about what is common open space was last time we talked about this.
So under two, location A, we need to add that parking is excluded from the.
And in G, back up.
Let's hope that this is going to be feasible.
I don't think anyone's.
So someone builds one, right? How's that going to work? Well, that's the other thing, too, is we can talk to Ted and have him review this, because Ted Donell has given us this some thought, probably as much as we have.
Yeah, I think it would be good to have Ted look at it, and could somebody actually build the maximum number of units?
So parking, driveways, roads are not part of the common open space?
Yes.
And if someone had a problem with any one of these, they could just be like, I want a PUD exactly like this, but with this change, and, and apply for that, right?
Or they could give us plans and say, can you guys give me relief on this as a condition of the, of the D U.
Oh, yeah.
PND.
Got that, kind of?
Yeah, okay, so if accessory structures shall be allowed and must not exceed 66% of the primary dwelling room, there's square feet, whichever is less, and must meet the required exterior setback, or exterior, is that how you want to say it? Because we, we don't want.
You don't want that same perimeter setback?
Yeah, well, I want that same perimeter. And, yeah, and must.
Just call it that.
Must be within the required exteriors. And then also, in the code, you know, in our code, you can't have an accessory structure in a front yard, so.
Right.
So.
Well, this is different, I mean.
I mean.
Well, you wouldn't be allowed one.
The front, the front yard is going to be the common area, common open space area.
Not necessarily. The common open space area could be in the back, or the middle.
The center, yeah.
The center, yeah.
I can picture it like that, yeah.
This is certainly a little different, though, I'm not sure we can say front or back here.
I mean, we, maybe we should, you know, like, make at least some of the units face the street.
I think, I think it's obvious that, like, you might, I mean, because like, your, your common area, like, that can be part of like the setback, right, obviously? So, I mean, you'd, advantageously, you'd want to have that part of it.
Because you have a big ring with all the houses.
Yeah, because you, because you can't build there anyway, so you might as well, like, use, I mean, right, I mean, so you would think that would at least incentivize people to use the frontage, where the largest setback is, right?
As part of that open space, kind of.
Right, right.
You could say something like that, you don't, you don't want to permit accessory structures between the road, frontage, and dwelling units. And that would prevent, that would maintain the keeping with the neighborhood.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
The, the.
That's good.
I mean, they, they do that actually. Four dozen, garages, all over one garage, I don't know, little town. Houses behind the garage, but all you see is like a garage and like three windows.
You're right, some garages are in front of houses.
Yeah, it's gross looking, I don't like it.
Well, you may not like it, but.
It, I mean, it's, it's for density reasons, that's why, you know, you stack them real close to each other, though.
Okay? Oh my God, almost the last page.
Okay.
Okay, so four is the homeowners association, discussion about open space.
Last page of this.
And I think that under number six, four looks, I mean, under number six, a level B site plan review is required, I think, I think we can scratch out all the other stuff, because in the.
Just period.
Site plan review, we really do cover stormwater management and all that stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
And then you got the 50%, not more than 50% rental on five?
Um, do we want, yeah, or?
But not more than 50% rental, rented.
I have to be honest with you, I don't know how we would ever regulate that, I mean, it's no different than any other home, if the homeowners association is going to allow it, I mean, you know.
Well, I think if we say it, we're at least setting the standard.
Okay.
And so you know initially, and then you'd assume that the homeowners association would monitor it.
Okay.
We didn't want to have a situation where somebody builds all these, and they live in one, and they rent all the others out.
Have their little colony.
Or they live in none.
So we want to.
Well, see, that's the question we had last week, or last month, was, is that bad or good, or is it?
Yeah, I guess we decided it's bad, and so we want to.
Yeah, but, but after my last couple of council meetings, I, I think council would not object if the open spaces were.
Even in RA, or RC?
RA would be.
RA.
I mean, we got rentals all over town.
Yeah.
You do, you do.
That's true.
And there's really no way you, you know, unless you knock on the door, you can't, you know, and.
Then why don't we allow them in RA?
No, I just said, we, we, we got rentals all over town.
Two-family is not allowed.
Yeah.
He's saying there's rentals all over town.
Well, we're just setting that down as a standard, that we would like it to be a combination, either all ownership, or no more than 50% rentals.
That's okay, we, we're not going to approve this tonight, anyway.
We're not approving, you can think about it.
No, only if I'm to stand, approving that to go to council.
Then you have to defend it.
You're going to have to defend it.
Yeah, and, and that I can't defend. No, but, yeah, okay, we, we, you know, right, right now, I'm, you know, it's.
But you're going to hurt on advocating for it.
Yes.
I don't think you can, I mean, liberal-minded as one would want to be, I don't think that you can argue against the fact that if you intersperse units which are, are owned with rental units, that in general, a certain standard of maintenance tends to be maintained. There are rental areas that are beautifully maintained, because conscientious individuals live there, there are areas which are not maintained at least, and, and we would all hope that they would be well-maintained, but I think when you state that only 50% of those will be rentals, there's a communal pressure on those rental units to, yes, would you please do these things so that you may maintain in keeping with the rest of us? And none of us like to realize that we do live in that kind of society, but we do? And it does create that pressure to raise your.
Well, I think it's also, it's about, it's about how the development is actually built. I think that's the main thing, is if you're building just to rent it out and make money, then you're going to make design choices that are, that, that have to do with the level of choice that renters in town have, which is almost none, right? So you're going to make design choices that are about density over quality of life, and, and so like, if, if, if the developer knows that there's going to be more of a.
We're trying to make a neighborhood.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, also, like, the people who are going to invest in buying them are going to, to want them to come up to a higher standard of, there's, there's a high demand for housing in town, but it's, it's less, um, yeah, there's, you can be more choosy than renting.
Yes, but if.
To an extent.
But if you, if you look at the, in, in what areas are really available to this, you know, pocket neighborhood and so forth, it's.
Well, also.
See, I, I, we, we're, we're making, you know, when we say only so much can be, can be rented, we're, we're kind of putting a value judgment on the people that rent.
I agree, and if, if we're talking about elderly people who want to be in a pocket neighborhood, and maybe don't want to buy. and maybe don't want to buy a home, you know, don't want the responsibility of buying a home, we're limiting it, I agree with you, Jerry.
But we're, we're, we're trying to set the standard. And, and to me, you know, uh, it should be up to, basically, that developer, you know? Because we're, we're, we're really concerned about elderly, you know, young people is getting older and older, and people want to downsize, okay? But they may not want to own, they now decide we're just going to rent. But if we say, well, only 50 percent of this place would be, be rented, is your, 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 to me, we're limited.
Well, let's think about it.
Yeah.
Let's leave it the way it is and think about it.
It does go both ways, because you don't want a developer to come in and just cookie-cutter a bunch of substandard or...
And I think that's what Rose is saying.
Structures.
I'm not arguing for that, by the way. I really only agree to the 40, 50 percent so that I can get the duplex in.
She's horse-dressing House of Cards.
Yeah, yeah, this, you know, I'm, right now, I, but I know we're not completely done with it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so for number...
I'm going to have to think about that.
Okay, so for number six, we're going to leave it at this, the level B site plan review is required. Seven says that the pedestrian walkways can be, will be included on the plans and are part of the common areas.
So did you leave five as it is with, you're, we're going to bring that back for discussion?
We're going to bring it back, but...
No, well, we were changing it to no more than 50 percent can be rentals.
And then we're going to pressure Jerry this next month.
And then we'll, we want it in that, and we'll look, consider it over the next month.
And number seven, I, that they're part of the common areas in tracks, but I don't think that, should they be calculated into the 400 square feet of common open space per dwelling unit?
I think they should be.
I think they should, sidewalks should, pathways.
No.
You don't think so?
Uh, I'm thinking of, like, what about, like, you know, the big turnaround in front of the wellness center? Is that, huh, open? What is it called? Common open space? No.
Well, I don't think that's a pathway, but I think sidewalks and pathways should be, or else you're making it unreasonable.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
Okay.
All right.
But not the roads?
Yeah, we're not talking about the roads.
I guess that turnaround is a road. I don't know, it's not a road.
It is, I see people drop people off and use it, yeah, the wellness center.
Oh, yeah, I, I always drop...
I refuse it, I want to do it.
Maybe you realize it now.
So they have to walk all the way to the...
I see people drop people off, that are having trouble getting...
That was the idea of the designer, but I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, most people, most people don't use it, but I've seen people...
Sure, that's where you park.
No, I, I let people out all the time.
The council park.
Okay.
Because it's don't, really, other than going around there, you got, you know, like a...
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, a tennis court would become an open area.
Okay, so Denise has some other things, just some ideas and some things that came up in reviews? Is there anything here we want to include specifically?
I like the lighting, I thought the other things probably weren't necessary.
You like the no glare and/or power facing?
Yeah, and even though the, the lighting was addressed another way, I thought it was nice to have it. Because I think it's just that there is that tendency now, trying to have lights that are directed down, lower wattage, so that you don't have light pollution.
What is a one-foot candle intensity?
You can hardly see.
It's like you can see a foot. If you go through a lot of towns, you'll not notice that a lot of them, it's very low wattage.
But what does that mean?
I think it's that you can see one foot out.
Okay, so it only lights up one foot? It's like, it's like a point in the darkness, if not...
As opposed to a flood, where...
Well, if it's that hard to understand, it might be...
Yeah, we probably need to change that.
Yeah, we can just do number two and forget the lighting features. Shall be equipped with cutoffs to direct light downwards. And we, I can add some, to diminish glare and spill over.
So take your flash light.
Is, is there, like, a, maybe we could do, like, a wattage limit or something like that? Lumens, lumens.
Actually, I think a candle is a lumen, or a foot candle is a lumen.
Is one lumen?
One. It might be a, it's...
Yeah, okay, so only allowed one or two lumens?
There's some unit crossover there somewhere.
In other words, we don't want to look like Midwest when this is lit up.
Yep.
Is that what we're saying?
Yeah. Can we just put that in there?
Well, it also just wouldn't be appropriate in other, in a residential area, you know?
Is it limited in residential areas, though?
I think it's part of the whole...
Can we limit it more than we can limit?
I, we know this one.
Can we just use the, the lighting requirements for the, it's in the general...
It's in, it's in the general code, it says one foot candle.
It's like, it's like we've got the cutoff elements and... So we don't have to add that up?
1260 of five, I don't think you need it now.
Well, we're fine, then we're fine, we're fine. Just say the lighting will, but, um...
Well, I think she says that in two, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're just saying put number two, just use number two?
Yeah, leave number two in there.
All right, okay, all right, good.
In fact, is there a general statement you say that all other, you know, portions of the code, you know, not addressed specifically should be?
Maybe we need to just do the rest of it next time.
Can we do the rest of it next time?
I'm going to put my heels together for 20 minutes. You want to leave?
Yes.
Let's go, we got one paragraph. We going to talk about, do we need fencing?
I hope not.
Fencing is probably, like, that homeowners association, right?
And that's on the next page?
No, it's on the bottom of the...
On the bottom.
Yeah, we let, we let Annie up for the chain link fence the whole way around on that carpet there, yeah.
Well, it's supposed to be black.
It was supposed to be black, and it's supposed to be screened in places.
Right, and they didn't do it right, but we're going to get on a little...
Where is homeowners association, I shouldn't see it? Fencing? But where is the homeowners association?
The, uh, very, very top.
That was four.
Yeah.
So we already skipped over it, so we were okay with it.
Yeah, you, you must not have been part of that conversation.
No, I didn't, though. No, I thought we were all okay with it, so we just went to five, six, seven.
What now with fencing or...
I think we just leave fencing alone, that's, that's the homeowners association, so...
Yeah, it's covered.
Fire access, that's again, that's part of the existing code. Now, this, next to the bottom, the architecturally unified and compatible, do we want to say that as part of a general statement? At the beginning and maybe even?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think so, I think we need to.
I think that is nice to say.
So...
And how are you going to find that?
Well, you don't define it, that way...
Can we not, though? How about we just don't? Because I, personally, I find that dwelling, grouped dwelling units that are more varied are actually more conducive to fitting in with the other, other houses around them than a, than a planned, everything looks the same together. Actually, that's more strikingly. What do you think?
Well, see, I would agree with you if you were looking at, like, that development on the way to, you know, the Fairfield Mall where everything is very cookie-cutter, but if you put a ranch-style home next to a two-story farmhouse-looking home next to it, I mean, that kind of variety would look bizarre.
No one's going to do that, though, it's not economic.
But, I mean, I think that's what this is saying, is, is when they say architecturally unified, it's more in terms of the type of structure generally, not to look the same.
I think saying architecturally unified actually encourages them to all look the same, because it's simpler for designers.
Well, you don't want to have a plat, right? Your choice between A and B.
Maybe you want to say must be architecturally compatible.
I don't even know what that means.
I don't either, though.
Well, drive around, tell us drive. And, and every house there is different. And those that were like, people have redone them, and you've got...
I just think saying anything encourages them to be too unified.
Let's leave it alone, let's just leave it out.
It's already in principle.
Are we done?
We already said 420.
We're tired.
ADA requirements are regulated by...
I have two.
Oh, you came to the council meeting?
No, no, I don't, I know, I've been up since 5:30. I thought you said we're up since.
It's only 30, guys.
Okay, so, so we have all these other things, let's leave those alone. The text amendments.
And we'll look at them next time.
Yes. Because we've just kind of rewritten the, the, the code, anyway. So that means you can update the, um, this, and then that'll lead you to update the other stuff.
We probably won't change the other stuff very much.
Do we still need to have a public hearing to make ourselves legal?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a public hearing for chapter 1262, changes or pocket neighborhood development. Anyone here want to say anything? Okay, not, then I'll close the public hearing. Um, will we reconsider this next time we meet? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Agenda planning, agenda planning.
Oh, God.
So I, I did put, I do want to say, I put out on the table the, uh,
Unifying compatible.
An overview of the sections in the comprehensive land use plan. I mean, I reviewed the 2010 plan, there's a lot of things we can update, a lot. A lot of things that have happened since 2010, um, and so...
That's yours. Oh, no, that's mine.
I do want to make one more statement real quick, and that is that after we get through this PND, any other text amendments are being held until the fall.
Oh, good.
Okay.
I'm just keeping a file of text amendments as they come up.
Yeah, that's good.
And I'll just bring them all to you sometime in the fall winter.
Okay, so that means that we may have time, actually, to look at the comprehensive plan next time. Okay.
Great.
Okay. So agenda planning is, uh, comprehensive land use plan, old business.
1262, chapter 1262, public hearing.
Yes.
So we're adjourned? We had a motion.
We need a motion.
We had a motion.
Between now and then.
Rose and, and Julie.
Okay, Rose's motion, will you adjourn, and Jerry's second?
Maybe it was Adam and Rose. I mean, Adam, Julie.
Voices sound identical. All a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, so much.